I now call the September 20th, 2022 Finance Committee meeting to order at 6:45. The Chair would entertain a consideration of claims, or approval of the claims, sorry.
Your Honor, I would make a motion for the consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $671,342.11. Law and credit cards in the amount of $5,708.29. Payroll liabilities for September 9th, 2022 in the amount of $226,766.89. For the total of $903,817.19.
All second.
Okay, Councilwoman Salisbury has the motion, seconded by Councilwoman Pronto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Is there anything else we need to discuss tonight?
None, Your Honor.
All right, with that, we adjourn at 6:46.
I now call the September 20th, 2022 Regular Meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. We have a couple of changes from the... For the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, Councilwoman Cox will lead us in the pledge, and Councilwoman Dean Pronto will give us the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we pray that you guide us always, and help us satisfy the needs to be met during this meeting, and strengthen us as we make tough decisions. Help us work as a whole rather than as individuals. And Father, we pray that we will be fruitful in doing your will. Please guide us so that this meeting can be productive, and let us be effective and decisive. Lord, protect and guide all of our first responders and our military as they do the work to keep us safe, and keep all of them safe as well. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilwoman Lindsey Cox.
Here.
Councilwoman Dean Pronto.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Kristy Salisbury.
Here.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here. The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilwoman Bailey.
So moved.
And Councilwoman Borders.
Second.
Kyle, was that you?
Yes.
Motion is Councilwoman Larson's, and second is Councilwoman Salisbury. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I declare that we have a quorum present. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Cox has the motion, Councilwoman Pronto has the second. Further council discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Communication from the floor? Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is scheduled for a public hearing will be given the opportunity to speak during that public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on any other item may speak now. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Seeing none, we'll move on. Would the city clerk please conduct consent agenda item by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minute, September 6th, 2022 Regular Council Meeting. Approval of the minute, September 20th, 2022 Finance Committee Meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee Recommendations for September 20th, 2022. Raffication of an Open Container Permit Application. It was submitted by Central Wyoming College for a potluck dinner at Sunset Park. This was previously approved for September 9th of 2022. However, due to weather, they had to reschedule, and it was rescheduled for September 19th, 2022, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Approval of the Municipal Court Report for the month of August 2022. And an Open Container Permit Application submitted by Downtowners Fall Harvest Festival. It'll be on Main Street from Second Street East to Federal Boulevard on September 24th, 2022, from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM.
I would like to thank city staff for getting that last item on consent. We appreciate that. That was a last-minute move, and... That was a last-minute move and good job. Are there any other items requiring further discussion?
Your Honor, the finance committee met earlier this evening and approved the consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $671,342.01. Elon credit card in the amount of $5,708.29. Payroll and liabilities for September 9th, 2022 in the amount of $226,766.89. For a total of $903,817.19.
Thank you very much. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
So moved. Second.
Councilman Pronto has the motion, Councilwoman Cox has the second. Council discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Public hearing, consideration of sale of airport property. City administrators report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, coming before you is the sale of two parcels of land up near the airport. The first of which is 4455 Airport Road. It comprises Lot 1A of the industrial... Excuse me, the Energy Industrial Park, Replat. The second is 4424 Skyline Avenue. And this parcel is 4.9 acres. That was recently created from a survey and land description from 302 acres that was held by the city of Riverton. The offers from RNA Investments, and the purpose of the offer is for economic development. The purchase price, or the offer price, excuse me, for 4455 Airport Road is $100,000. The comparative market analysis performed by our real estate consultant was $105,000. The offer to purchase 4424 Skyline is $12,250. The market analysis for this parcel is $12,750. The city council did consider this purchase offer on August 16th, 2022 during its business meeting, and made the following motion to submit a counteroffer agreeing to the offer price, contingent on meeting advertising requirements and agreeing to a drainage easement and approval of the Economic Development Letter. The description of the drainage easement was completed the very next day, and the seller agreed to the counteroffer subsequent day on the 18th. Pursuant to statute, the land sale was advertised. Ms. Watson took care of that for the city. It was advertised the 27th of August, September 3rd, and September 10th. The sale of property, if approved tonight, will close on September 30th. The seller is requesting to close on the 28th. That shouldn't be any issue at all, especially if approved and that after public hearing. Revenue from the sales of property will be deposited into the Airport Enterprise Fund. And in your packet, you do have a few maps that show where the parcels are, and then also the comparative market analysis for each one.
Thank you, Kyle. The Chair would entertain a motion to open a public hearing in consideration of sale of airport property.
So moved.
Councilwoman Salisbury has the motion. The motion, and Councilman Pronto has the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I now declare a public hearing open. The public hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statute and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record.
Your Honor, seeing no one, we move to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing from Councilman Pronto, and a second from Councilwoman Cox. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the sale of the property to RNA Investments LLC for 4455 Airport Road in the amount of $100,000, and 4424 Skyline Avenue in the amount of $12,250.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Cox has the motion, Councilman Larson has the second. Further discussion? Just so everybody has that, it's a total of $112,250,000. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Bid award for the air handle unit, the MAU, for the wastewater treatment plant. Interim Public Works Director's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor and counsel. Before I get too deep into the weeds on this, I noticed a typo on your staff report under the recommendation. The first paragraph has an amount of $79,161. That was for a project completed last year. It should reflect a total of $111,745. That was my mistake in not catching it before the council received the packet. I apologize for that. At any rate, this project replaces two of the makeup air unit furnaces at the wastewater treatment plant. One in the sludge building, and the other at the headworks at the facility. There are six total units. They're all roughly 30 years old, give or take, all starting to be a little less efficient and less effective. The units remove harmful vapors from the facilities, and then make up that air that's depleted, while also heating the various locations at the facility. The city advertised, beginning on August 20th, 2022, specifying the units that would be acceptable for the project. And on September 15th, 2022, the bids were opened. Both responders were responsive to the bid specifications. The first one was Sweetwater Air for $111,745. In the second bidder was Sheet Metal Specialties Incorporated of Casper in the amount of $118,020. There was a base bid to replace in the sludge building and the headworks to relocate a heating unit and makeup air unit, or an alternate bid to relocate the unit outside of the facility itself. Neither one of the contractors chose the alternate bid. They both accepted the base bid. Would be our recommendation, we have $110,000 budgeted for the project, which leaves $1,745 over the budget amount. However, we've had nine projects. Four of them are underway at the treatment plant right now. One of the projects came in under budget by $8,850, so there's ample money to absorb that overage in the capital budget. Be our recommendation to proceed forward with an award to Sweetwater Air LLC.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to award Sweetwater Air LLC the sludge building and the headworks building makeup air units, the MAU heaters replacement project at the wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $111,745.
So moved. Second.
Councilman Pronto has the motion, and the second is Councilwoman Cox. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. A bid award for the sanitation truck operations supervisors' report, please.
Our council. Meeting here tonight to discuss the bid award recommendation for a new sanitation truck. The Riverton City Council approved the purchase of one new sanitation truck earlier this year when the budget was being prepared in the amount of $325,000 for the total project, which includes all of the equipment and other required equipment on the truck. It should be noted that the dealer pricing on this vehicle was not available until early September of this year, based on the market. The pricing that we provided during the budget process was based on very early estimates, historical purchase amounts, and assuming a 6% increase due to the inflation. This truck was put to bid out on December... Or, excuse me, on September 3rd, and again on September 10th, with the opening being held on September 13th. We received two bids during that timeframe, both bids being responsive, and the bids are listed below. The first bid was from Coys Brothers Equipment for the new sanitation truck in the amount of $397,596. The second bid was from Peterbilt of Wyoming with a new commercial side-loader truck in the amount of $353,396. Staff proposes that the city of Riverton awards the bid to Peterbilt of Wyoming in the amount of $353,396. Again, the increased amount totaling $28,396 is primarily due to the availability of equipment in the current heavy truck market. $325,000 was originally budgeted for this unit. The remaining amount of the $28,396 will be absorbed within the sanitation capital fund budget with savings from postponed purchases in this year's budget.
Thank you. Appreciate it. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the purchase of one new cab-over refuge truck with automatic slide-load and blade-style compactor to Peterbilt of Wyoming in the amount of $353,396.
So moved.
Councilwoman Salisbury has the motion. Councilman Pronto has the second. Any further discussion?
Is this adding to the fleet or replacing the vehicle?
It will be the replacement of older units. A lot of our trucks... A lot of the trucks are aging 10 years plus, so this will be for a replacement unit for one of the trucks currently in service.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We've had a tough run lately on garbage trucks, and we've had... We have one in Casper still that has parts. Have they got them on?
That is correct. The parts have finally been received for the truck in Casper. I spoke to the vendor today. All the parts have been installed. They're hoping to have the truck released on Thursday. So we're waiting for that to happen. We are always very guarded with that because things occur that cause delays. And that's one of the big challenges nowadays, is the parts availability in repairing vehicles or equipment as they fail.
Appreciate that. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Consideration of Resolution Number 1457, State Loan Investment Board SLIB Grant Application for the Wyoming Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA funding. City administrators report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. If this one looks familiar, it's because it is. The city council considered a resolution on August 2nd for a grant application towards these ARPA dollars. That was Resolution 1453. Just as a quick reminder, the state of Wyoming received about $1.6 billion in ARPA monies for distribution. The governor's office, JAC, and the legislature worked to prioritize those funds, enrolled Act 20 of the last legislative session, basically appropriated $334 million to go back into certain programs throughout the state. One of those was $50 million of competitive grants for water and sewer improvements across the state of Wyoming. As a reminder, the city of Riverton prepared a grant application to replace some of the broadcasters and meters for our collection system and distribution system for water. And I say "collection" because we also use those meters to help track our consumption of the sewer side of our utilities. Currently, our meter system is aging. It's not supported. And actually, we've gone longer than what industry-recommended lengths are for our meter system. What's more is the low-led regulations currently make it that when we take out a meter that's not functioning, we cannot repair it and place it back because it does not meet low-led standards. So this grant application serves to help replace our meters across the entire city, give or take 4,500 different properties. It'll also change the manner by which we're able to read and receive information from those meters. Right now, we have broadcasters at each location. The transmitting length or bandwidth for that is not very large, so we do have an employee drive a truck once a month to collect the data that is being broadcast. The new system will be an improvement in that we'll be able to broadcast to towers located around town. Those towers will then convey the information directly to City Hall. That's a benefit to our utility billing department, but it's also a benefit to our residents because they will have nearly immediate information regarding to their consumption. So if they ever have questions, we don't have to send a crew out to receive that information. Our utility billing employees will be able to pull that up. So a few upgrades, but most importantly, it will take care of our meters that are just aging at the end of their service life. With all that said, Resolution 1457 amends our resolution from before, and it's a simple one. The previous resolution that you adopted included the total project amount. The Office of State Land and Investment contacted us Sunday, September 11th, and said, "Hey, this is great, but what we want is just the state's portion or the ARPA portion in the resolution." So everything's the same. We just have changed the number to reflect not the total amount of the project, but the amount that would be the ARPA funds or the competitive grant that we referenced. Thanks, Your Honor.
Thank you. Would the city clerk please read Resolution 1457 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, proposed Resolution Number 1457, a resolution authorizing submission of an application to the State Loan and Investment Board for a grant through Water and Sewer ARPA Grant Program Funding on behalf of the governing body for the city of Riverton for the purpose of replacing noncompliant and unsupported water meters that predate current low-led requirements and automating the manner by which water consumption is read and reported.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 1457, supporting the application for the Wyoming State the State Loan Investment Board, SLIB, for the Wyoming Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA Water and Sewer Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Larson has the motion. Councilwoman Cox has the second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The A&amp;T Mobile Home Village Speed Limit Adjustment. City administrators report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Jose Pro participated in the public portion comment of your last business meeting on September 6th, and he addressed a number of concerns that he had in regard to the A&amp;T Mobile Home Village subdivision, or we also refer to that as the All Nations Mobile Home Park as well. As part of his concerns, Mr. Pro expressed that he would like to see the speed limit reduced in that subdivision. He feels that it is too high based on the gravel road conditions. Currently, the speed limit that is posted in that area is 25 miles per hour. As stated in your packet, Riverton Municipal Code 1012070 gives you authority as a council and governing body to address speed limits. Basically, the council has authority to establish a safe maximum speed for roads and sections of road different than what is established by Wyoming statute if the city goes through engineering and traffic investigation. To address the traffic investigation component and requirement of the code, the police department compiled data as it relates to citations and traffic incidents. That table is in your packet. The data comprises the years 2019 to 2022. And just as a brief summary, for accidents that resulted in property damage, there were five total. For accidents that related in personal injury, there was one total in that period. And then the number of citations in that period was 15. We do not have traffic counts at this time for this. We do not have traffic counts at this time for that area. When receiving or when reviewing safe maximum speed limits, the council should consider engineering standards, especially as they relate to stopping distances. Basically, however fast a vehicle is traveling, you want to know how fast it can also slow down and stop if an obstruction comes into view or if there's an emergency. In residential areas, stopping distances are critical to protect health, safety, and welfare. A lot of variables influence stopping distances. These include the velocity being traveled, so the speed, the driver reaction, vehicle mass, so how big is the vehicle and how heavy it is, the braking system, the tires, the condition of the tires, and then the surface conditions as well. And that ranges from anywhere from a paved surface to a gravel surface, but also a wet surface, a dry surface, et cetera. Unfortunately, it's not always possible to measure each of these variables when considering stopping distances. However, we are able to measure a few of them and estimate a stopping distance in feet per second on a few of the variables referenced, specifically the driver's reaction time and the vehicle's braking distance. Reaction time is the distance a vehicle travels from the time a driver reacts and then applies the brake. So they see an obstacle, they see a traffic sign, takes them on to process it, and then they hit the brake. The braking distance is the actual distance that the vehicle travels once the brake is hit and the vehicle comes to a stop. Again, braking time varies on the type of braking system that's in the vehicle, whether it's automatic brakes, et cetera. The tires that are there, how big the vehicle is, so a Ford Pinto is going to stop a lot quicker than an F-350. Included in your packet is an industry standard on braking distances from those two variables, and then also the variables of speed. For those in the audience and watching at home, an example of a ten mile an hour speed limit, when you add the braking distance and the perception distance, the stopping distance is a total of twenty-seven feet. So traveling at ten miles an hour, you stop after twenty-seven feet. Fifteen is forty-four feet. Twenty is sixty-three feet. Twenty-five is eighty-five. Thirty is one oh nine. Again, these are estimates based on variables and assumptions. It's not necessarily the exact in every scenario. Federal law is actually what mandates and gives authority on maximum speed limits. They give it to the state. The state of Wyoming, through the legislature, has established maximum limits. The interstate's eighty miles an hour. Thirty miles an hour is for urban areas, so that's the majority of the City of Riverton. And then school zones is twenty miles per hour. As previously denoted, governing bodies like yourself have the ability to change what is listed in state statute if a traffic investigation and engineering principles are followed. I should note that maximum speed limits must be realistic to ensure motorists comply with the posted limits and then also assist law enforcement officials to reasonably enforce them. I quoted something from the Wyoming Department of Transportation about what influences people's driving behaviors, especially when it comes to speeds. But in brief, motorists drive as they perceive road conditions, and they may disregard a maximum speed limit that they find unrealistically too low or too high. So basically, a realistic limit promotes voluntary compliance in the majority of users. The reference is typically the eighty-fifth percentile. Will comply so long as it's reasonable. Mr. Pro, and he is in the audience, and I want to recognize that he also, I believe, has some other residents with him as well, is requesting the City Council reduce the safe maximum speed limit in the A and T Mobile Home Village to fifteen miles per hour. He has worked with his neighbors to collect signatures of support for the request, and that petition is included in your packet. A quick tally, and I hope I'm correct in this, and Mr. Pro, you're happy to correct me, but there's forty-four signatures on that petition. There are approximately a hundred and sixteen occupied lots, and I came up with that with just a quick count off of a visual, so I say that's why it's approximate. That's thirty-eight percent that participated in this petition of that entire Mobile Home subdivision. The City Council has a few actions to consider tonight, and you may make the motion as you see fit. The first is to change the current safe maximum speed limit from twenty-five miles an hour to fifteen. The other is you could change the limit to something other than twenty-five and other than fifteen. You could leave the safe maximum speed limit at twenty-five miles an hour, basically take no action. Or you could direct staff to perform more in-depth analysis. Again, we didn't necessarily do an engineering study or a traffic study. We didn't even take traffic counts, and that's because we don't have the equipment to do so. But we were able to extrapolate information on best practices in the industry and then also on the data that the Police Department had. Should the City Council choose to change the safe maximum speed limit, the city would need to invest in installing new signs, and we do have sufficient budget to do so. Your Honor, I will leave it there, and again, the council has opportunity to make a motion as it sees fit based on those options or any other option that it considers. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion, if anyone has one.
Your Honor, I'll make that motion to change the speed limit from twenty-five miles per hour to fifteen.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion to... The Chair would entertain a motion to change the speed limit from twenty-five miles an hour to fifteen miles an hour. We have a motion by Councilman Pronto and a second by Councilwoman Cox. Any discussion?
Your Honor, go ahead.
Go ahead. Does that mean if we change the speed limit there to, from twenty-five to fifteen, that we have responsibility to maintain those highways, those, those streets?
We already have that responsibility. They've been accepted by the city.
And so where does that, where does that extend? Does that extend down to Smith Road?
Yeah. According to the, according to the, if you go to the pictures that you have of the subdivision, that road was accepted, I'm going the wrong way. Thank you. That road was accepted all the way from the All Nations section through to the subdivision itself. Now, once again, we've had that discussion. Is it asphalt, gravel, pavement, whatever it is? That will be on the homeowners' association there, but the city, by accepting the subdivision, has to maintain the surface.
Yeah, because we, if we've got spare gravel or we've got blacktop or whatever, there's a home for it.
Yeah.
I mean, crushed concrete, you name it. There's a, that place could use it, and it wouldn't hurt anybody. It would benefit us all.
Your Honor, yes, those, those are City of Riverton maintained roads. Our Streets Department does go out there multiple times a year, but I do know the condition of those roads is, is one that requires constant attention. The Fix Our Road Citizen Committee has also discussed this area on three different occasions. And so that is something that is on our radar, that the road conditions could be improved. And we will maintain them as far as gravel roads. Mr. Ellison sends the crew down there, and we also respond when there are specific concerns brought up by residents. So if they say, hey, the potholes are getting bad after such and such storm, we try and mobilize.
Good. Thank you.
And then as far as the question tonight is, is just the speed limit on those areas, and then once it's changed, then we would have the responsibility to enforce them.
Chief, does this cause you any problems if we drop the speed limit?
Your Honor, it does not at all. I'm fully in favor of it.
Okay. And in the information, we've had fifteen citations in that area over the years. Will it impact your visible use of this, that area?
No, Your Honor. And so we just did the last three years, just so you know.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody in the audience want to address us on this? Plenty of you here.
First of all, I want to say aloha. My name's Darren Akow, and I recently moved here to Riverton. And I have purchased a home and some property in this All Nations. I'm the first lot that you see when you go in, and I'm the last lot you see when you leave. So I see everyone that comes in and out of that place. Speeding, going too slow, walking, running, whatever. In regards to reducing the speed limit from twenty-five to fifteen, honestly, I don't think it's going to make a difference. The speed limit is only going to be good if someone's there to watch. If there's no one there to uphold the speed limit, then all the speeders will just continue to speed. What I like to suggest is if we can put some speed bumps in there or some speed dips like they have on Smith Road, you hit that couple of times and you're just going to slow down. That's it. If you, if you put them within twenty-five, thirty feet of each other, you don't have enough room to pick up speed because you're just going to have to slow down again. Before you actually get into the neighborhood, that long stretch of road, the drag strip, it wouldn't hurt to put some there too. But then again, you know, they have all these other different things in Hawaii. They got these four-wheelers. They got motorcycles. Kids just like to fly, you know, and I think all those additional bumps would just be fun. So I, I'm just saying that if you do reduce the speed to fifteen, then they're just going to go twenty. So if it's that twenty-five, they're just going to go thirty. And it's going to be that way until they get caught. And there's no one there daily to monitor but us because we see it every day, every night. And it's not everyone. It's a handful of them. And we know which ones they are because it's a handful of them. But that's just all I got to say, and I appreciate your time.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Loopy Rodriguez, and I've lived down there in that area since two thousand and four. So I have seen it a lot longer, and I agree with, with Darren that even if it's fifteen miles an hour, with the way, and the road is, got a lot of holes in there, that still don't slow them down. And we realize that law enforcement can't be there all the time to give tickets and stuff. They have other things to do. And I agree with him, and I don't know if the, the, the speed bumps every twenty, you know, whatever they think the, as far as getting more speed, twenty, fifty feet, twenty-five feet, whatever the, the city would think, but because there's people, they're doing, it's twenty-five, and I, I have seen them through. They're doing sixty if it's, and it's early in the morning. I don't know if it's because they're going to work late for work or, or in the evening, you know, and we realize that, that law enforcement can't be there, you know, just waiting to serve tickets, but I agree that speed bumps or dips would work a lot better than or if you want to do the fifteen and then the speed bumps, that's fine, but I think speed bumps, from living there in my experience, that that would work better would be speed bumps or, or dips in there or they can't get accelerated. That's not want to mess up their vehicles underneath. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
We realize that the community has more things to do than just sit there and watch for tickets.
Appreciate that. Thank you. On a gravel road, just...
I, I understand their, their concern and, and as it is that we've been here before and we've spoken to the point where...
Could you state your name for?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Jose Pro. Excuse me. I understand their concern. I understand that if we put the speed limit at fifteen, that a lot of people will not look at it and say, well, I'm, I'm, I'm there. Again, you know, police can only do so much. And their, and their concern is that maybe if we, we get some kind of speed bump going on there, but that's going down the road. We, we have to start somewhere first. And as we've talked about it before, that there's thought about getting us our roads done and getting them fixed, and we, as a community, put in our, our, our investment into that, which I'm kind of working at, at this point in time to figure out what we can do to help along with that. I, uh, I just say we have to just start somewhere that, to show that, you know, that the city is with us. And by putting it at fifteen miles an hour, we'll, we'll figure the rest out as little by little as we go. I mean, you know, Rome wasn't built in a day, as they say. And I just ask that we take this into consideration when you take your votes and, and think about that. One step small will eventually get us to where we need to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good question here. If the, if it's a gravel road, you can't really build speed bumps on that, can you? I mean, would that impact grading and everything else that?
You can do it for one day.
Hello.
Hello there.
My name is Brandy Mead, and I also live in All Nations. I live right off of Arapahoe Drive, which is actually a paved road. Every, all of the side streets off of that are gravel. As far as the dips, once they get onto the actual paved road, they definitely take off. Not everybody, but there are quite a bit of them that fly through there. It's very dangerous. There's a lot of kids in that neighborhood. For instance, the bus stop, they have to walk around the corner, a lot of the kids, down a block to get to the one bus stop in that area first thing in the morning, and cars are flying out of there to get to work or wherever they're going. Speed bumps would help, and I, I'm for lowering the speed limit to fifteen, even though they may not follow it. I'm, I just moved here from Hawaii not too long ago as well. I'm not sure as far as violations go here, but I know in Hawaii it is tiered according to how much you go over your speed limit. And so if you're going ten miles over your speed limit versus thirty miles over your speed limit, you're going to get a higher ticket. If it's same here, even lowering it to fifteen, they'll have to deal with heavier consequences. And if that's the case, then maybe they'll think twice, even if they're going from... If they're, the speed limit is twenty-five and they're going sixty, even if it's fifteen and they're going thirty, that's better for our neighborhood than what they're doing now. It's just really dangerous for the kids when they have to walk to and from the bus stops and, or the bus stop, the only one, and there's those few in there that are not abiding by the speed limit.
Ma'am, what, what time is, what time do they catch the bus in the morning and?
So the bus comes at seven fifteen, and then, so a lot of the kids will start walking right around that time. And you'll see, there's at least three cars at seven o'clock that go right on Arapahoe that have, once again, that's not the gravel road, that's the actual paved road. And as soon as they hit that corner to get to it, they're taking off. And, but there's maybe like at least fifteen to twenty kids. Where the bus stop is, is an empty field, so it's not even in front of anybody's house or any kid's house. They're all walking from all these side streets. Like, we don't even let our kids walk, and we live right in front of it. We actually drive them right around the corner just because we don't trust everybody driving in that area. It's a little dangerous when you have the kids, and especially, I know it's nearing summer, but during the summertime, the kids were out everywhere riding their bikes, and it's, it's kind of scary for them.
Seven o'clock in the morning if we're there?
Is when, yeah, so at seven fifteen is the bus, is when the bus gets there, and I wait outside after there's a bunch of us Hawaiians that just moved there, so my mom will pick all of our kids up and take them in her van. And I'll stand out there and I'll wait for her to come back, and I'll see them while coming around the corner.
And then what time do they get off the bus?
The kids get off the bus at right about four o'clock, right a little before.
We'll spend extra time down there. We can do an extra patrol down there.
I think that's what Chief's trying to get to, and he's good.
And that's much appreciated.
He's good. We'll, we'll roll a unit down there, and, and very possibly, we could move the speed limit sign. He's good. We'll, we'll roll a unit down there, and, and very possibly, we could move the speed limit sign down there. And it flashes when you're over speed.
That would be great, just because we're at the point when they're, when they're flying, if we're outside, we're yelling at them already to slow down just because it's, it, there's no reason why anybody needs to be going that fast through a neighborhood. So even if it's twenty-five, um, as Darren had said, you know, he doesn't think they'll listen if it's fifteen. If it's twenty-five now and they're going sixty, if it's fifteen, maybe they'll go thirty, and that's a win. And if they still go sixty, then hopefully they'll get a bigger ticket and have to handle the consequences.
I don't think we have a progressive municipal, uh, system for speeding tickets, do we, Chief?
Yes, sir, we do.
You do? Perfect. So that will help.
Yeah, they'll think twice.
And we could even talk with the judge and have her start maybe a little bit higher than the lowest stage of that, so.
That would be nice.
Kyle, could you put that on our list to talk to the, to the judge there? So on the, on the asphalt section, we could put speed bumps in. Speed bumps would work.
Because that is the main road, so all of the side roads have to get on the asphalt road to get to Smith's. So if, even if that one alone has the bumps, it'll make a difference.
Okay. So maybe we could take a look at that, Kyle, see what that, I don't know. Do you, they make bolt-down units, and they make, um, actual asphalt bumps? So we could investigate which one saved us the most money.
Yes, Your Honor, we can look into that. Um, as far as speed humps, speed bumps, or speed dips go, um, the placement of them is pretty crucial, because what you find is for frustrated drivers who like to speed, they will hit that, slow down, and then they'll accelerate faster, actually, to try and make up time. And so that is one variable that we do need to look at when speed bumps are installed, but we can definitely look at it. I've been on, um, several projects where they've been successful.
So another question for, for me would be that there's a hundred and eighteen approximate units in that area, and we have forty-one people that have signed the petition. Did you have resistance to, did you have any resistance to the?
I'll let him.
No, sir, um, there might be a hundred and eighteen units, but some of them are, are, nobody has lived, lived in them. So they're just there at this point in time. Uh, like I said, it takes time to clean our community. I mean, I have a goal to get to with my, my community, and, uh, we're just trying to figure out what we can do little by little. Uh, we still have to get control of the home association, as, as you know how it is there. And in doing so, we can kind of set some bylaws and figure out what we can do and enforce our home association bylaws by then, at, at that point in time, once we figure a way to get a hold of, of our, uh, home association from the people that have them right now.
Okay.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I just want to say I really appreciate you guys coming and bringing it to the city council so we're aware. But I've driven out there, and, and I do appreciate what you've cleaned up. I mean, it's, there, you guys are making a difference. There's lots of kids, lots of kids we work with at the program. So I really appreciate, you know, I think forty-four out of a hundred eighteen's a lot of people to actually
And, and.
Put their name down and do something, so I'm impressed.
A lot of them that signed the petition has, you know, they have businesses and, you know, and they say, you know, if we can get in, control the home association and put new people in, that, uh, we're willing to, they're willing to do more, you know? And, and, you know, put their time, their, their, their efforts into it. A lot of them have cement countries. Have, uh, working, uh, um, well system and stuff. So I mean, I'm just, it just takes time to get to where I gotta try to get everybody that wants to join into this committee to, 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 uh, move forward, and, but we have, we have ambition to clean up and do better.
Well, and I'm hoping if they see the police in the mornings and afternoons, that'll slow them down a little.
I would be grateful, yeah. And as I was talking, uh, I was talking to the chief, I was like, we're trying to see about getting a, um, a neighborhood watch going there too, because it's important. It's, a lot of us agree, it's important for us to, to feel safe in our homes. So, yeah, you know, thank you very much.
Your Honor, so I just texted Charlie Marshall, who's the School Resource Officer Sergeant, and he said that they would have, pay more attention to that area and have some guys down there.
Super. Yes.
Okay, when you come into this subdivision, you have one speed limit sign coming in, but you have nothing going out the other direction. The one that's there, it's been in my yard so many times. So right now, it's just bungee cord to the pole. Just wanna let you know that. I, I bungee.
So will you?
Sign back up.
Will you give it back?
It, it's there. I don't know how long the bungee's gonna last, but it's there. It's been in my yard for.
Maybe, maybe we could cut a deal for it.
Yeah, you know, I'm just. But I don't know if there should be one as you exit, because there's no speed limit sign posted, so it's like, okay, well, let's just go for it then. There's no speed limit sign.
Well, we'll bring the trailer down too, couldn't we?
Yes, sir.
And post that, and then we'll, we'll pay extra attention to your str- your street signs and your, uh, traffic signs.
Yes.
Okay, so your stops and, and those things. We'll, we'll take a look at those and get our stuff, get our.
If you have any questions, just let me know. I.
So do we have, uh, or in this, in this motion, we have nothing for the speed bumps? Are we gonna leave that alone for now?
Your Honor, the, the motion as it stands is just to address the speed limit. It does not have anything for speed bumps.
Everybody okay with that? So you'll have to tell us how the speed reduction works, and then if you need those speed bumps, you'll have to come back and tell us. And we'll, we'll take a look at that with our guys and see how close we need to put them, and how many that would they, that we would need to slow that traffic down. We're on te- We're, we're on television, so could you come up and speak into the mic so the audience can hear you?
That we necessarily will, will keep track and will of how often, how quick they knock down the, the stop signs out of the treaded court and the speed limit signs, because through the years, they have been up, but it, it seems like people have purposely ran them over and knocked them at, knocked them down. There's a guy that comes out, I think it's right onto a rapole. He put, he put railroad ties because they were knocking down the stop sign right there and coming on his property, you know, and it's happened more than once. So if somebody went down there and looked, you could see right where I'm talking about. I live at one eighteen Rapole Drive and right across, and he got the nice place on the corner, but he, he got tired of it, and he just piled wood and railroad ties there where they wanted to cut the corner and hit the, hit the, uh, run over the stop sign. And I've seen most, all of them has been put up, knocked down, you know, so. And I've seen the city down there putting them back up, but if nobody says nothing, nothing, like my wife did, they weren't there. And the time we almost got T-boned, there wasn't a stop sign, and that's what, she said, well, who's gonna be liable? If, you know, is it the city or the county, because there was a road coming out from the county onto the city, you know? Road to Rapole, if you look at it, and she told them, who's gonna be responsible if a kid gets hit, there's no stop sign in the county or the city. You know, because there was no stop sign there, and they was right down there and started putting up stop signs and stuff, and, but they get knocked down. And that's kind of what I'm getting at too. We'll see, and we'll keep, see if the speed limit signs work. I think maybe both would work, you know, the speed limit and the, the dips, the, or the.
The, the bumps?
Yeah.
Okay.
In my, in my opinion, because I've been there since two thousand and four.
Well, and we don't want to annoy you going into your own subdivision by putting in too many obstructions, but
Yeah.
A fine line between those. We really do appreciate, we can't, if we're not there, we don't see
Right.
Signs down, so we do appreciate your response to tell us.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's come to our attention that All Nations, um, the road signs are kind of valuable, and they keep turning up missing for some reason.
Yeah, they get knocked down or whatever, whatever, and, and I said, well, I didn't say speed limit sign, and is that gonna be an out for them because it was knocked over and not up, and people do it, you know? And out, well, there was no speed limit sign up or, or a, a stop sign or whatever, because I have seen them through years knocked down. And, and if some, if a red, if the community, you know, people don't just get a hold of the city like we did, and, and tell them, hey, there ain't no stop signs. We done it, my wife done it after, uh, after a lady almost hit us. There was no stop sign.
Your Honor, would it be appropriate to amend the motion to add?
But, uh, I'm just saying, I've probably, I've seen some, maybe.
We'd, we'd have to, we'd have to see if that was applicable to the.
You know, not.
The motion.
You know, so.
So we can, we can go to an amendment. We, we haven't accepted that yet, would, uh, would.
I'm just thinking to save time, I mean, if they can look into the speed bump and the thing, it would take care of it where, before something does happen to, I mean.
Uh, Councilman Pronto, you have the motion. Are you acceptable to that?
I'll amend my motion to, uh, change the speed limit from twenty-five miles an hour to fifteen miles an hour, and direct city staff to look at possibilities of, uh, installing some speed bumps or some other, um, equipment to slow traffic.
Second.
Super. Kristen, did you get all that?
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you. So now we have that motion in place. Um, any discussion on, further on that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Um, we're down to reports and council roundtable. Um, Lindsay, since you're sitting over in the North Ford, do you wanna start us?
Sure. Um, I haven't attended any meetings since our last meeting. Our rec board meeting was rescheduled to tomorrow night, so we'll be at that. Um, and other than that, I don't have anything else to really report on.
Thank you. Dean.
Uh, Your Honor, I haven't, uh, attended any meetings since our last council meeting either. It's kind of felt a little funny with the, the timing the last few weeks. Um, as Lindsay pointed out, our rec board meeting's tomorrow night at seven o'clock here at City Hall. Um, did wanna mention that the, uh, the new airport gate looks great and works well. Appreciate that. That's a, it's a nice addition up there. And I couldn't help but wonder what a new garbage truck smells like.
They smell really good for a day or.
For the first day.
Does it have that new truck smell, at least for a little while?
For, for just a day.
And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thanks. Kyle.
Uh, yes, Your Honor, uh. Last Friday, we attended the airport meeting, Mike and I, at least not here, so. Um, we're on schedule to probably get our ten thousand in, and we would have probably above that. But there's a pilot shortage, and, uh, you know, everybody goes, why is there a pilot shortage? That's because the major airlines curtailed during the pandemic, most of their senior pilots. So when the pandemic diminished, the airlines went into the carriers and stole all of their pilots. And so they've got equipment, but nobody to drive it or fly it. So that's where we've got a shortage, and that's why we're down to one flight per day. But even with one flight per day, what is really happening is people are adjusting their schedules so that we're flying planes fuller. The load factor is better. And the gate is good. That's wonderful. We've got that, but there's some problems with the gate in that if you drive too fast, then it opens or closes, and so you've gotta observe the speed limit going through there. Uh, secondly, I, I attended the.
Maybe a speed bump?
Yeah, well, we might need to see bumped up there. What do you think? Yeah. Uh, the second meeting I attended was, uh, waste management, and, uh, I was privileged to get a big flyer on it. And, uh, the most important part is we have roughly, and I say we, because we're part of the waste management in Fremont County, and, uh, the Shoshone landfill is closed, and that cost about a million and a quarter, million three, million three hundred and fifty thousand. Well, they came up with figures on what it would cost to close the Lander landfill, which is scheduled for two thousand and twenty-nine. Now, when I first started, that was going to be closed at two thousand and twenty-four, no matter what, no matter if it was half full or partially or whatever, it was a mandate, and that's the way they felt about it. Well, we had an election in two thousand and seventeen, and there were a lot of changes that went about. And so that changed to two thousand and thirty-six. Well, now it's down to two thousand and twenty-nine, and how you measure where or when you're gonna close a landfill is airspace. And we measure that by determining the finished product and counting down to where we currently are. And at the rate of, the other thing is during the pandemic, the landfill slowed down, and so it was filled up slower, and so that extended up from twenty-six to twenty-nine. Well, during that period of time, they figure that to close the lander field, it's gonna be about three to four million dollars. But landfill is perpetual. It's like a graveyard for our old folks. You water it every day, you cut the grass every day, you take samples.
Every day.
Every day, and so far, right now, it's scheduled for thirty years. Well, Shoshone will be thirty years in, uh, two thousand and fifty. But who's to say that the EPA won't extend that observation point? Meaning you take water samples on the peripheral to see if the substrate in the landfill is leaching out, and you watch to see if there's any ingredients in that water that's causing the water layers to be polluted. Well, now with that, there's, we have what are called forever chemicals. And those are the poly, um, fluorides that don't disintegrate. Sunlight doesn't bother them, but they're measuring in parts per trillion. So, you know, it's a difficult matter, but anyway, what the point is, is we have about twenty-one million dollars. And to close all of the landfills, if that were to happen, we're short eleven million dollars. And that would come back to whom? Taxpayers. So we don't have enough money, and the county commissioners think we do, so we've got some work to do there. Last thing, the airport is having a cookout on September twenty-fourth at one o'clock, and you're all invited. But you've gotta bring a side dish. So I know there's a hook. So you bring a side dish, but you get to talk to, uh, uh, United Airlines, and, uh, the barbecue will be at one o'clock, and that's a celebration. And that's, that's kind of a good thing, because, you know, it's a two-way street. They're helping us out by getting people out of here, and we're, we're seeing that it expands. My last subject, glad you guys gave me all this time. We had a Wind River Visitors Council Release Tourism Impact Data. Now, that's very interesting, because during the year of two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, we had thirty million was spent on restaurants, thirty point seven million from outsiders. Not Riverton, but outsiders. This is revenue money. We had twenty-seven million spent in lodging. That's heads and beds. Where's this all going? Well, you, you gotta wait. Well, you you got to wait. Twenty one million, six hundred thousand was spent on entertainment, recreation. Who has better recreation than we do? Nobody. Nineteen million, nine hundred thousand was spent on gas and local transportation. That's why Mike is not here. Seventeen million, four hundred thousand was spent on shopping. Walmart, all the other places. Nine million, eight hundred thousand was spent on food storied, food stores. And only one million was spent on visitors' air travel. Only one million. So, so what? Well, of that, of that beds and heads of twenty seven million, nine hundred thousand, that goes to our community and is distributed so much to Lander, so much to Riverton, so much to DuBois. And Rich and I, uh, excuse me, Mayor, Mayor and I felt that we have always got the short end of the stick. Because they come to us and we approve their budget, but they tell us they don't have any money. And yet they got that much money this year, a twenty five percent increase from last year. So what does that mean? It means that Riverton's a good place to live. It means that people are coming through. It means that people are moving in here. I have a guy moving from Wisconsin coming here, wants to be away from the rat race. He's going to retire. He's semi-retired. So Riverton's a real good place, and and these facts and figures show it. Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. Appreciate those. Christie.
I attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting last Thursday, and the new director, Sam, that we met at our last meeting was there. He's been going out in his first three weeks. He met with seventy five business owners and is really excited. Um, the group approved a motion to approve a new accounting firm. And we'll put out bids every year now that the finances are cleaned up, so that's nice. Um, I appreciate Kyle, our new city administrator, sitting down with all of us individually, getting what our areas and our, the people that we serve, ideas and taking the time out to do that. And I really appreciate all that the police have been going through. Like, you guys are doing a lot for this city, and I hope people realize that that's really great. The last thing is November fifth, we're going to be, last year, the city, the chamber, and the college all came together to do the Quick Draw Arts and Action event, and it went really well. It was held in January. This year, we're going to do it November fifth from five to seven at the C W C Arts Gallery. And it's local artists. They'll have their paintings and their artwork up two weeks before that. And then the day of the event from five to seven, there will be, um, appetizers. And the artists will be doing their artwork for the contest. There will be prize money for them, and then they'll have other artwork for people to purchase for Christmas presents. But last year, it was a really, really nice event. You could just wander around, watch it. And so, um, I think it's it's a great partnership with the chamber, the city, and the college, all serving the community. So I'd hope lots of people come to that. And, um, Kyle, people can probably stop by for your cookout before the hall farm or the fall harvest on Saturday from two to six downtown. So I don't know if they're going to eat with you or eat afterwards, so.
If they have a side dish, right, Kyle?
Yeah.
What are you taking?
I'm taking chili.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. City administrators report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have a few things, and I'll start with the fun ones. The Sunset Park Playground is open. Um, we're very happy with the partnerships we have in the community. Um, Fremont County Rec Board helped pay for the playground surface. Uh, Rotary helped apply for that grant. And then the city crews worked very hard with Job Corps to spread the new surface out. So we're happy to have that open, and I've already heard from several families that they're just pleased to to be there.
Kyle, it is packed. There's so many kids playing on that, so thank you for that, too.
It's a fun playground. Um, the other good news is Sunset Park Intersection at Broadway is partially open to north and south traffic. I know that the residents in the community have been very patient with that project, and I'm happy to report that we are seeing some improvements there for accessibility. The splash pad will cease operation for the season this upcoming Friday, and we've had a very successful season. Um, I think everybody in the community knows what a challenge it's been to get that splash pad under our feet. But this year, um, we didn't have any issues outside of a little bit of vandalism. Um, we were able to keep the splash pad open as posted and get through the whole season. So we're very happy that it was a successful, um, summer, and we're happy to give the water a little bit of a break for the winter time. Um, Councilman Bailey's not here, but he did attend the force meeting. And just a few things to report. Again, we're working through the Sunset project. We should expect to see asphalt pavement coming in the next week to week and a half. And then, uh, the committee is also working on priorities for the upcoming construction season. Um, they're looking heavily at pavement preservation projects. That would be slurry seals and chip seals, and that will allow us to, I think, touch more streets across the whole community. Um, they are looking at solutions for Gannett Drive. And then, just as a point of information.
Not Gannett.
What did I say? Gannett?
You said Gannett. Davis.
Davis. Thank you, Your Honor.
You thought I wasn't paying attention, didn't you?
Well, now you know how my staff feels. Know what I mean, not what I say. Um, Davis, thank you. And, um, the other point on that project is Sunset, as you remember, was broken into two phases. And rather than hit that corridor again immediately after doing phase one, we'll probably let that rest for at least one year and then reexamine as how the committee is looking at it. So we shouldn't expect phase two next year.
Okay.
Um, the last few items, um, we appreciate Mia and Kristen attending Wham Cat and representing our community and continuing their professional development. They were at the board meetings and then also the conference last week. I will be out the rest of this week, starting tomorrow, for the Airport Coalition Conference, but I will be available by phone and email. And then the the last thing, Your Honor, is the absolute most important, and I need to read some of this. We need to recognize Kristen Watson. Kristen, uh, received her Certified Municipal Clerk designation from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks just this last week. To become a a certified municipal clerk or a C M C, it takes quite a bit of dedication. First and foremost, it takes extensive education. Uh, opportunities, a hundred and twenty hours she had to put in to go towards this certification. And then also, um, extensive experience in the field. There are several other things that went into her designation, but we want to congratulate her and thank her for her dedication. And that professionalism, um, with this certification will raise the service we provide to our citizens. She's not the only member of our team that has gone through these, um, professional, um, certification programs. Ms. Harris has, and, um, Mike has, Chief has. So we've got a great staff, and we're just happy to recognize Kristen tonight for what she's done.
Kyle and I spoke about that, and he snatched it before I could get it. And I was going to have your folks here and and a whole big party, but, uh, he said that this would work better, so. And, you know, that really is a success story because, um, years ago, Kristen started on the front desk. And I think there's just a lot of that, uh, advancement that we have inside the city of Riverton. Um, uh, Charlie Marshall was in my office today, and he's been here twenty eight years.
Yes, sir, twenty nine.
Twenty nine years. And so, um, we really are fortunate to have, um, a large group of employees that that do a wonderful job and go out of their way to to get certified and to do the work that has to be done. And it's extensive. You know, the, uh, H R system that you work under is not an easy thing to do. And, uh, we appreciate all the work that you do. So even if we didn't get your folks here and the kids and everything else with balloons, we we do recognize how hard you work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Kyle? Um, Kyle and I and the chief attended a Riverton Peace Mission meeting, um, about two weeks ago, which, uh, it weren't really quite good, don't you think, Chief?
Yes, sir, I thought it went really well.
And so, um, they wanted an M O U, uh, signed and and presented that M O U. Um, we're we're not at that point, and, uh, and so we're continuing to work with that to try to see if we can make those things, uh, marry up. There is a, in my, uh, Kyle, you could remind me or look for me, uh, the the dates of that, uh, um, is it's at, uh, five to seven in the city parking lot Wednesday night?
Your Honor, seven to eight.
Seven to eight.
Tomorrow night.
And it is this Wednesday? Yeah, that's what I thought. So, um, then we also had a, um, Riverton Community Safe Meeting up at the ambulance, um, garage. And the chief was there, and I was there. And, um, we had a a good turnout of citizens and and, um, got some information about the ambulance. And then we also had some information about the Neighborhood Watch. I met with a group on, um, Riverton Soccer Group that is trying to put together a, uh, complex. And and that's, um, they're really fortunate. They had, um, a group from Jackson approach them and offer to pay for the feasibility study for that facility. And, um, they returned all the information. And that feasibility study is what what Jackson would like is to include a hockey ring in that soccer facility. In that soccer facility. And so, um, it's down by the, uh, Willow Creek School, and, uh, there's future growth there. And then we, of course, have Ryan Park that they use extensively. And, um, that facility in its in its current form is an eight million dollar facility. Has a, uh, ice rink, an ice rink attached to it and a a blow up, uh, indoor soccer field with it. And between the two, there's concession stands and in locker rooms and those types of things. So the conversation was, how do we pay for that? And how do we push that forward? And the reason Jackson would like that is that Jackson travels, you know, if they had to travel clear to Cheyenne to play, it puts a lot of time in there in their travel, and so they recognize that, and they're willing to participate with the city of Riverton and pay for that feasibility study. And, um, they had finished that and and brought it to us, and we had that opportunity to to work with Kevin Krasnicik and and others to talk about what we could do about that. Um, I also want to thank the chief and the and the police department. We had, um, some action down on Washington Street, and chief jumped right on that. And we we got that cleaned up and and, um, action slowed down just a little bit. And, um, the residents called me back. They complained and said, thank you, and I appreciate that. I and I would like the police to know that I appreciate what you do, when you do it. And so when you you stop and talk about that, same thing with the signs out at the All Nations. The second citizen that called said, every time the police come, before they get there, they must, they must have a scanner because they all scatter. And so when I told chief that, I didn't know what he would do about that, but he went in and fixed that with undercover units, and we were able to clean that up. So.
Your Honor, first thing I did is I went down there myself because nobody knows that I'm the chief of police or that I'm really a cop, so it works out pretty well.
Those twenty two years that you've been here, they recognized you. So I do appreciate what they do, and and so do the residents of Washington. So, um, then I'm I'm fortunate enough to have, uh, meetings with Kyle Butterfield, and and he keeps me up to staff on on what those do. And we we meet on that, that on every Monday. If anybody else has any questions or problems that they would like to deal with, that would be a great day to come in and talk to us. I did get two opportunities to cut weeds over that span of space. We had a staff meeting, which I really do appreciate. Kristen was gone, and Mia left early, so the rest of us had a lot of fun. So nobody there to watch us. We we did what we wanted. I had another interesting opportunity. I I get notification that the tree board, and I I'm invited to the tree board, but I was busy. And, uh, I spotted the tree board out in the field, and they were outnumbering trees. And they were doing it from Monroe down the bike path to to, um, Adams. And I really do appreciate the hard work that they put in. Nobody understands or knows what the tree board does. And you ought to go to one of their meetings, um, and find out all those trees are numbered, and they know what what they are and and what they need. And so it's fun to see them out in the field. I had another really enjoyable opportunity. I got to go on a ride along with the Riverton Police Department, and Officer Alley was the one that took me around and babysat me, kept me out of trouble. I would like to thank him for his, uh, good supervision. Um, we started around eight o'clock at night and ended around one, and we had three arrests. Um, we we covered a lot of distance, and, uh, the car hit a deer on just south of the bridge. And so, um, the Highway Patrol was out and shot the deer to put it out of its misery. Um, there was, it was a lot of, a lot of good information. There were eleven units that responded to that call for assistance. Uh, fire units and police units, B I A, Highway Patrol, and three city units. So, um, they came in as a airbag deployment and, uh, people without able to get out. And so, um, and that was all in a matter of minutes. And so I appreciate all the work that the police do and and allowing me to go with them. I I think that's a good idea. So from that soccer meeting, we generated an idea that the guys that could help us generate funds and and maybe make that soccer field a reality was to talk with Idea Inc. And so we went to Alan Moore's office for a meeting on that soccer, uh, opportunity. And he was very helpful and was willing to teach us what we might need to know to put a board together. He says that our, one of our problems with that, that athletic boards is they come and go with their parents. And to make a facility that wouldn't be that costly and and that long lasting is we need to get a board that is more, um, adapt and across, a better cross section across the the community. So we will go to work on that to make that, uh, be something that would happen. Yesterday, we had shots fired on, uh, uh, the apartment complex behind Big O. And, uh, I appreciate the facilities that, we should have sold popcorn. There was plenty of of people in attendance to that, and that was resolved with that incident, and I appreciate the police again. Once again, Kyle pushes in and gets a meeting every time he wants, so I appreciate that. And, uh, he, uh, is doing a wonderful job as an administrator, and we need that information. And he is is doing a wonderful job of getting that to the right sources. We had a W, a D W I meeting that, uh, many of us in this room attended. Today, it was from nine thirty till noon, and, um, really great numbers out of that meeting. The the fatalities fatalities last year were were very high. And this this year, we only have, uh, five fatal car crashes that are related to alcohol. And so the numbers look really great. And, uh, part of that is because we have spent a lot of time advertising and a lot of time standing up law enforcement on on those holiday weekends. So we appreciate the law enforcement that we have and and, uh, and the the D W, the D U I Task Force has been meeting for, today was our one year anniversary, and, uh, um, we spent a lot of time in that room trying to figure out how to lower those statistics. And fatalities, according to their, uh, statistics, are down seventy three percent over that year period of time in Fremont County. So it does make a big difference when we talk about those things. Um, I was offered, I had the opportunity to also meet this evening before this meeting with the chief and Kyle and another officer. And I appreciate their time, and we kind of, uh, uh, talked about that, ride with the police and what we could do to make those things work better. So I appreciate all those opportunities and and staff does a wonderful job. And, um, I can't say enough about them and and what they do to to make Riverton work. We're we're fortunate to have the airport in as good a shape as it is. I had to chuckle about that gate. Um, that's a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar gate. It ought to work really, really well. And so, um, I appreciate all of those things that happened and and, um. And, and any of the things that, that people need help with, if they would contact us, we would like to. And I got a call just this afternoon at around, what was it, guys? 4:30?
About 4:30, yes, sir.
And it was that we had, we had maybe had some miscommunication on that, that open container. And to be real truthful, Kyle, when I got off the phone, it already had that fixed. And, and it was already underway, and, and the memo had already been shot out to council. And we appreciate what you do. Other than that, we, we have an executive session this evening, and it's going to, it's going to cover personnel and potential litigation. The Chair would entertain a motion to reconvene, to convene into executive session for the purpose of personnel considering an appointment, employment, right of practice, dismissal, complaints, charges against a public officer, professional person or employee in accordance with Wyoming Statute 16-4-405AII. And for the purpose of considering offers, tenured wages, salaries, benefits, or terms of employment during negotiations in accordance with Wyoming Statute 16-4-405AX. And for litigation, considering litigation in which our government body is and may be party in accordance with Wyoming Statute 16-4-405AI.
Second.
Caught me off guard. We have the motion by Councilman Pronto and second by Councilwoman Cox. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The Chair invites Kyle, Kristen. Anybody else? The Chair would entertain a motion to reconvene into, to regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Larson has the motion. Councilwoman Salisbury has the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. We are reconvened into the session, regular session of the Riverton City Council at?
8:48.
8:48, thank you. Action items for the executive session. We'll have two. Councilman Pronto, do you want to go first?
Your Honor, I move that we provide authority to the city attorney to file suit with Centurion for damages that occurred during construction of Sunset.
Thank you. Well worded. Do we have a?
Second.
Second. Kristen, did you have time to get all that?
I did, Your Honor. Thank you.
So we have a motion from Councilman Pronto and a second from Councilwoman Salisbury. Further discussion, if any? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Second motion is Councilwoman Cox.
Your Honor, I move that we allow staff to begin the recruitment process for Public Works Director and approve anticipated recruitment timeline.
Second.
So we have, Kristen, you okay with that?
Yes.
So we have a, a motion from Councilwoman Cox and a second from Councilwoman Salisbury for to extend the hiring position for Public Works Director for the city of Riverton. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Without anyone's objection, we stand adjourned at 8:52. Thank you.